Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 29. The board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing the employment history of particular persons, potential litigation, and to receive advice from counsel subject to board approval. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting? Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Can everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes.
Okay, we, we have to begin?
Yes, I'm gonna let, we're gonna start with item, top item on our president's report tonight, which is item 1.1.1, which is a very special honor, our Bosse's student of distinction. So I want to hand it over to Christine and Jamie for this special event.
Good evening, everybody. Today is a very special night because we get to honor and recognize one of our students who attends the Pinesbridge School at Bosse's. So I want to start by introducing Ryler Boyle to everybody. I had the pleasure, I have had, I had the great pleasure of meeting Ryler on Tuesday when I visited his classroom. And on the day that I was there and the moment that I was there, the class was engaged in playing spring bingo, and Ryler was the winner that day. He was the first one to get bingo. I was able to talk to the people who surround him at Pinesbridge, and I have never been more impressed by the feeling of love, commitment, and care for the children in the class. I would say that Ryler's teacher beams with joy, and it is so obvious that her love and care plays a huge part in the growth and progress that Ryler makes in her classroom each and every day. Ryler loves to walk fast, and sometimes he runs through the hallways. He gets really excited with math and numbers. He's an easygoing kid who loves to cook and loves to do science experiments. When I saw Ryler at his school, not only was I so proud of him, but I was so proud to be a part of a school district and a community that cares so much about their students and makes sure that they are in a place where they can grow to the maximum potential that they can. So I am really, really excited to introduce Ryler to all of you. Ryler is here tonight with an entourage of people who all play an important role in his education. He's here with his parents, Amy and Eric, his brother Reese, his teacher, Jennifer Reed, his principal, Alaney Parisi, and the assistant superintendent, Lou Rioli, I'm sorry, Lou Rioli. And Lou, actually Ryler and Jen and Alaney invited me to come anytime I want, so I can only promise you that I will be back to see Ryler as well as all of the other students that you are so beautifully educating at your school. So at this time, I'd like to invite Lou up to the microphone on this stage.
Thank you for having us this evening. I want to thank Dr. Ackerman, her leadership team, which is absolutely amazing, we love working with them, and the greater Chappaqua community for all your support. This is a special night, not just for us, but obviously for Chappaqua and our students tonight. We're here this evening to recognize Ryler Boyle, yours and our amazing student. I'd like Dr. Ackerman to come on up and please join us to give us the student his medal of excellence. I would like to now introduce Ms. Alaney Parisi, who is the wonderful principal of our Pinesbridge Schools. And if you've ever been there, or if anybody wants to visit, anybody, you call me up, I'll take you on a tour. It's incredible. It's my happy place, and if anybody knows me, I'm pretty happy to begin with. It just makes me that much more happy. So it is, it is a special, special place. But if Alaney would come up and introduce our student of distinction award. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you so much for the very kind words. It's our pleasure educating all the students, but also educating such a fabulous student like Ryler. He surprises us every day, and we're just so very proud of him. And I am here, joined here by his wonderful teacher, Ms. Jennifer Reed. Pinesbridge student Ryler Boyle is an outgoing, incredibly bright and determined young man who has made tremendous progress in the program. Ryler works eagerly to participate during group activities, establish relationship with his peers, and build on his independent skills. With the support of the classroom staff, he has developed his own pathway to success. Ryler loves participating in math class and lights up with excitement when he starts counting on a step communicator and when he identifies his numbers. He has become an avid cook this year. He participates in cooking class and loves every aspect of the functional skills curriculum. Ryler has made great strides in his social skills and looks for his classmates when he arrives to school. Ryler's teacher, Ms. Jennifer Reed, expressed it is a privilege being Ryler's teacher this year and witnessing his personal growth and achievements. For all these reasons and many, many more, we have chosen Ryler to receive the student of distinction award. Congratulations.
Right, congratulations. Congratulations.
Is it okay if we take a picture?
Sure, yeah. Oh no, you gotta leave it on. No, leave it on. You don't want to wear it? Look at that, it looks good.
Thank you, Ryler. Thank you, everyone from the Pinesbridge School. Thank you so much, Jamie. Tonight is our annual budget adoption meeting, but I can't begin tonight's meeting without acknowledging what I know is on a lot of people's minds, and that is the horrifying school shooting that happened in Nashville. It has become unbearable to watch this over and over again. We are all parents up here, and we are all angry and sad and frightened and heartbroken. There are things over which we as a board and a district have no control. We do not have control over the political divisiveness in this country and the fact that certain individuals, even elected ones, think it's more important to ban books than assault weapons. We don't have control over that. What we do have control over is the steps we take as a board and a district to help keep our students and our staff as safe as we possibly can. We have received many emails in light of this week's events, and we read them all, and we feel your frustration and your anger and your pain. We want to help you understand as best we can why certain security measures are put in place in this district while others are not. I know that that's going to be discussed during the superintendent's report. I know it was discussed last night at the, at the budget forum sponsored by the PTA. Thank you very much. And I want to give Dr. Ackerman an opportunity to talk about this again tonight and also allow the board members an opportunity to speak should they wish to as well. So we're gonna talk about that more during the superintendent's report when we get to a section on safety and security. But right now, I will move forward with some other matters first and the remainder of the president's report, which isn't too lengthy. We had our very special honor already, our Bosse student of distinction, and so we can move on to item 1.1.2 on our agenda, which is a calendar revision. So do you want to mention something about that?
So at our last meeting, I had asked the board to consider adding a snow day back to the calendar since we have had so few. And so my recommendation was, was that the 26th be a day that the district would be closed for students and for our 10-month staff, but it would be open for our 12-month staff and for all of our sports and other activities that need to take place in the afternoon. And so the board agreed to have me move forward and craft the calendar in that way. So it is up on the agenda for your approval tonight. Should you approve it, we'll send out a notice to the community tomorrow so that preparations can be made based on this adjustment. We don't always have the opportunity to do this, but since there were so few days that we hit off this year, I think we can take advantage of that opportunity this year.
Okay, so can I have a motion for item 1.1.2? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the revised 2022-2023 school district calendar. You'll move? Can I have a second? Hillary, any questions, comments? All in favor? Okay, and that, that is our last item on the president's report. I just want to say this is our last meeting before the school break, so I want to wish everyone that is celebrating Passover or Easter and anyone who's not celebrating anything but is very much looking forward to a school break, I hope that you enjoy some time off with your families and may you have a break filled with love and light and good things. So I'll pass it off to Christine.
All right, so the first thing we need to do is I have to do some official business, so I'm gonna open our hearing on the first responder resolution that has been noticed in the paper that we, that is up for the board's consideration. So the hearing is now open, so what the board is considering is adopting a resolution in line with provisions of Section 466A of the real property tax law, which would grant a partial exemption from school taxes of certain residential real property located in Chappaqua Central School District, used as primary residence of certain enrolled members of incorporated volunteer fire company or fire department, otherwise known as the volunteer firefighters, and incorporated voluntary ambulance services, volunteer ambulance workers located within the school district. And I'm asking the board to consider acting on a resolution that after having given the public an opportunity to be heard at a public hearing, which we'll do in a minute, hereby adopt the provisions of Section 466A of the real property tax law and provides to volunteer fighter, firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers who have at least two years of applicable service in an incorporated volunteer fire company or department or incorporated voluntary ambulance service. Located within the school district, a partial tax exemption from school taxes to the extent of 10% of the assessed value of the property as certified by the applicable assessor and subject to statutory requirements for assessment rolls prepared on the basis of taxable status dates occurring on or after January 1st, 2023. And so the, the resolution goes further to comport with the regulatory requirements, but that is what the board will be considering at tonight's meeting. So at this point, the, in the public hearing, we will take public comments that align with our public comment policy, but it can only be on this particular resolution. There will be another public comment period where other matters can be addressed. If there are any public comments that the board should hear regarding this resolution before they act on it, now would be the time to share those with the board in alignment with our public hearing requirements. And Lisa, we'll let you know if you go beyond three minutes so that you can wrap your comments up. Go ahead, just please state your name and.
Great.
For the, for the board and your comments.
Good evening. My name is Mark Herschfield. I'm the captain of the Chappaqua Volunteer Ambulance Corps, and I'm here to speak in favor of this resolution. Also, Fire Chief Ayden and Fire Chief Santone from the Chappaqua and Millwood Fire Departments asked me to also express their thoughts here this evening because they cannot make it, that they have fire department meetings. So all of the public first responders, volunteer first responders here in Chappaqua believe this proposal is an important one and a necessary one. During COVID, we had a hard time retaining members, and it's been a challenge since then to get new members to fill our ranks. In terms of C-VAC, last year, 2022, was our most active year ever with over 890 calls, more than, up almost 20% for the year prior and incredibly up 50% from 2020. So we're real busy, and so are the two fire departments. And retaining members and attracting members is very important, and it's measures like this one that help us to do that. This proposal will give us a tax break for people who've been with us for at least for two years. Currently, it's five years, so this would be pushing it back to two years. So this clearly is a recruiting tool, but it's also a retention tool. To qualify for this tax break, someone has to, for the C-VAC purposes, ride at least 250 hours a year or go on 25 calls, and that's a pretty significant commitment for people to do. So this is important to us, it's important to the two fire departments as well, that the board passes, so we can help to recruit and retain our members. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this particular resolution? Thank you for sharing your comments.
Thank you, James Poster, also from C-VAC. I just want to make you aware, a lot of the people on C-VAC, including myself, are doing six and 700 hours a year. Okay, I did 100 hours this past month only because we need to, we don't have enough people. So incentives help us, it's very important. You mentioned before, unfortunately, what happened today. You're looking at some of the people who will be here first to help you, and we're also working with you, as you know, on plans. So we're a team. I just want to mention that, we're a team, we're a, you know, a school district, we're a town. We put in a lot of hours, I know you guys put in a lot of hours too, and we're all working towards one common goal, safety for our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional public comments on this particular resolution? Okay, so that will close the public comment period, and so then the board will be able to act on the resolution in, in the agenda later this evening. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna move into the superintendent's report. And so first, I want to, I want to acknowledge that on the agenda tonight, we have two resolutions. The first is that we want to wish Andrew Lennon well. He's pursuing a different opportunity, and we are so grateful for his service here over the past two years. So thank you, Andrew, for being a part of our team, and we wish you well as you, as you move forward in your career. I just wanted to give you a round of applause. And so once we learned that Andrew was leaving, we engaged in an internal process, and I am recommending to the Board of Education tonight that Josh Cobbleblock become our next assistant superintendent for business in our district. Josh has been here for many years. He began his career here as a teacher and moved very quickly into different administrative roles. He is now currently our Director of Mathematics, Technology, and Innovation. I am, I'm really happy to be able to share his candidacy with you this evening. He understands our school, he understands our systems. A lot of the suggestions in our audits, Josh's skill set will lend itself very nicely to, to, to create automatic systems to help support our business operations. He has supported our capital projects in the, in the past, and so leading those capital projects into the future will be an area that he is very familiar with. We really are looking forward to having him as a part of our, our central office cabinet in this way. And so he is on the agenda tonight for the board's consideration. So I didn't know if anyone wanted to make any additional comments.
I'll let everybody start. I can first go ahead.
Andrew, thank you so much for everything you've done for our district, and good luck to you in the future. I know you're gonna have a great career as you keep moving on with your career, so thank you very much. Regarding Josh, I have known Josh for many years now, and I'm glad that you're deciding to step into a new role and take on more responsibility with the district. Our district is always, once had a policy or practice of promoting within, but we, when we see people in the district that show promise, we want to make sure that they can grow as a person. We're always lifelong learners, and I know, Josh, you've proven yourself to be a lifelong learner, and have always stepped up for challenges. So this will be a big challenge, you have big shoes to fill, but I know you'll, you'll be doing a great job, and thank you very much for doing this. Well, like I said the other day, what I was thinking about was the, the only thing I regret is I'll be leaving at the end of this year, so I won't get to work with you as closely as we've worked in the past.
Anyone?
I just want to echo my thanks to Andrew, you know, and the rookie up here still, so I, I, but getting to know you this, this first year has been terrific, and I wish you well, and looking forward to having even more time with Josh with all of his new responsibilities.
Yeah, I'll very briefly echo the same. Andrew, thank you. We've loved working with you and wish you all the best. And Josh, we're excited to have you on board in this new role, so I think it'll, you get to hang up here with us then, so, you know, that'll be fun.
I just want to say, first of all, thank you, Andrew. It's, it's been a pleasure working with you these last couple of years, and we all wish you well, you know that. We're very excited for you. And, and Josh, I'm just thrilled. I've been in this district a really long time. I think Josh has been here almost the same amount of time, but he's way younger than me, I don't know how that happened. But Josh has worn so many hats here, and I've seen it personally, that, that growth sometimes on, you know, as a parent, I've seen, you know, him as a teacher and on this board and various other roles and volunteers I've had in this community. He's been such a huge resource for us on so many fronts. He's been such a, a great help to us with our technology, and it seems to me, although I, I know how much work is at the business office, I really do feel that you will make a seamless transition. Josh, you seem to be able to handle anything and everything, and I'm, I'm just gonna be upset, as Warren said, that I won't be here to work even in a different capacity with you next year, and I don't know what I'm gonna do with all my computer problems in the future. Josh can fix anything, so I know you're gonna serve this whole district well, and we're just really, really thrilled for you.
So Josh, would you like to make a, a few comments, please?
Oh, there is. So you, you know, Warren and Jane, you both said tonight, what you said last night about how you won't be at the board table when I get to join it, but I feel like this whole community is at this board table. The work that the board does, the work that the administration does for this community, for these schools, is what grew me from starting out as a teacher to now be a leader in this community. And the, this school district has unique opportunities for professional growth and professional learning for all of our teachers, for all of our staff and our community, which in turn has an incredible education for our students. And I'm really proud to be able to lead the finance side of that so that we can fund everything that we do for the students and the families of this community and, and work together to keep making this an amazing, unique, innovative, forward-thinking community that it's always been, and I'm proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, so now we're gonna transition into our CSF part of the program. This is the night that the board gets to act on numerous grants, and so Adam's gonna go through our CSF grants on the agenda, and then we're gonna invite Todd up to make a few comments on behalf of CSF.
Great.
Thank you. So, so it's, it's difficult for me to even describe the engine behind just the next handful of slides between the army of volunteers that the CSF has and their board and the amount of time that they spend, as well as our innovation committee that we work with in the district, which includes students and faculty, building leaders, district leaders. And this, this, what I'm gonna share with you over the next couple of slides is really like months' worth of, if not years' worth of fundraising and deliberation and brainstorming, and it's a really amazing partnership between the school district and the foundation and our entire community. So I'm going to go through, our first grant is actually an Insta-grant, so we're gonna start with that. You see Insta-grants pretty regularly on the board, this kind of a rolling grant process for the smaller grants, and then the other ones are kind of the big annual grants. So the first one I'm excited about, it's an Insta-grant for geography carts, and there's gonna be two carts per elementary school. You can see our faculty there on the bottom. That amount that's listed is for each school, and you see it, you'll see it on the agenda as 5.4, 5.5, 5.6. And this is a really neat grant for a couple of reasons, one of which is there's no technology involved in this grant, which I think is a lot of fun. Those things that you're seeing there are actually like inflatable globes, so the kids can learn geography and see and kind of manipulate the globes themselves, and they're all actually writable surfaces. They come with atlases and maps, and so the students can take out like dry erase markers and mark them up, which is really neat because I think they, they do have a lot of experiences on devices, but there's something about being able to see the actual like three-dimensional earth there. So, so we're thinking about applying these in geography, but also in science when we teach lessons on plate tectonics, for example, and things like that. So, so you'll start to see these in grades three and four. We think it's a really nice addition to our social studies and science program. You can see the faculty that were part of those grants, and also Mary Devane's name is not listed, but she coordinated that across the district. She's our social studies professional developer. So thanks to the CSF for that Insta-grant donation. And then the next four are full grants, and you can see the like incredible generosity down there in the bottom left corner, $144,000 down there on the bottom left. So this, this grant is about building middle school hydroponics classrooms. So for the high school, you know, we have our Sustainability Research Center, which is like a full-blown greenhouse. Most of the work that Sunworks does, Sunworks is the organization that helps us kind of outfit the aquaponics, hydroponics side. Most school districts aren't able to build a greenhouse, so what they do is they convert a classroom into like a hydroponic system. And so what the Chappaqua Schools Foundation is granting us is the opportunity to have a classroom renovated so it can be a hydroponic center in each middle school. So this is a collaboration of several teachers across several different departments. Our STEAM teachers are involved, science teachers, technology teachers, and you can see the, the result of what these rooms will look like. So this is a lot of work with facilities, but also kind of setting up these facilities. So no renovations in terms of more windows, but the, a lot of artificial light will be brought in as part of these devices, and I think it'll help us pull that curriculum through so kids have experiences all the way, starting in the elementary schools, and then this experience in middle school, which will be built upon as they come up and use the Sustainability Research Center in Greeley. So thank you to the Chappaqua School Foundation for that opportunity. Oops, I think I went backwards. Let me go forwards here, excuse me. All right, the next grant is for the Horace Greeley Theater. We are here now, and you can see the resources that are there. This grant will give us the opportunity to buy some digital arts library, some recording supplies, basic scene stock pieces, stage craft supplies, and storage for all these items. So again, another generous grant. This one was written by Jessica Beatty here at Greeley to kind of enhance our theater program, so we appreciate that grant for the performing arts. And then this next grant was written by West Orchard. This is a elementary musical playground. You can see the company Free Notes Harmony Park Playground, and they provide the opportunity for students to actually play these like giant instruments which are installed out on the playground. So it's a, a neat opportunity for students as they go outside and kind of express themselves through music, but also the opportunity to just kind of decompress and play and, and de-stress. So we think this will be a lot of fun. I can't wait to see these installed and the students playing on them. So we thank the CSF for that. And then finally, we have a high school science department grant with also the help of Dr. Brutzart, who's our assistant principal, who kind of works, oversees the science department. You can see this is a biotechnology grant. You see some of those different, the different technology that this grant will fund. So this will be used in AP Biology in our biology class, perhaps even a future elective, and you can see some of the biotech tools there so the students can get in more involved in the biotechnology aspect of learning the life sciences. So again, another generous grant by the Chappaqua School Foundation. So those are, like I said, it's, it's hard for me to do justice. It's an incredibly generous slate of grants this year, and we think it's really gonna enhance the district across. You see how many students it'll touch across the different levels, so thank you to the Chappaqua School Foundation.
And then Todd, would you like to say any comments on behalf of the CSF at this time as a part of my report?
My name is Todd Harrell. I am the grants chair for CSF. I have two of my colleagues here also, Anuja Joshi and Komo Basim Malik here with me tonight. Wanted to specifically thank and take a minute to thank all of you, Christine, Adam, Jamie, Josh, and Andrew. You've really made this process easy for us, and we can, thank you for your continued support and partnership. Lisa, I cannot leave you out with our monthly emails to get us on the agenda. It's always a pleasure. I have to also thank our community members and local businesses. Without their generosity, we would be, we would not be able to fund these ideas you've seen tonight. As you've seen, our traditional grants, which total just over $280,000 this year, can impact students at every grade level in our district. This does not include an additional $15,000 in Insta-grants we've also approved this year. We are consistently amazed by our teachers' energy and innovation and the, and the district also, and we're lucky to be able to fund their ideas and kind of make their, you know, classroom dreams a reality. The CSF is really excited about these grants and cannot wait to see them come live in our schools in the fall. At this point, in the past meetings, board members have asked us to discuss our spring benefits, so I'm just gonna save you a couple of minutes if I can plug our spring benefit on April 28th. Our spring benefit is a goose feather this year on April 28th, and there's still tickets available. You might have cooked dumplings with Dale Toldy in our, in our pandemic fundraiser, so we'd love you all to join us. We have limited tickets, a wonderful silent auction, and we make it a really enjoyable night. So board members. Um, at this point, in the past meetings, board members have asked us to discuss our spring benefit, so I'm just gonna save you a couple of minutes if I can plug our spring benefit on April twenty-eighth. Um, our spring benefit is a goose feather this year on April twenty-eighth and there's still tickets available. You might have cooked dumplings with um Dale Talde in our in our pandemic fundraiser, so we'd love you all to join us. We have uh limited tickets, a wonderful silent auction, and we make it a really enjoyable night. So board members and administration, we can't thank you enough. We're really excited to do this work and um we appreciate all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Yes, I I I just want to thank you very much. It's it's an incredible, incredibly rich group of grants, incredibly generous amount of money. Um, I also um, I I I was in your position years ago. I was the Grants Chair for several years on CSF. I know the process that it goes through. I uh I I found it so rewarding really to to see what what you just talked about is like the innovation of all of our teachers, the ideas that they come with. And even though we have uh, you know, we are a very fortunate school district, um, there there is always, there were always projects that can't always be funded by regular, you know, tax dollars as we see what the 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 pressures and what our tax burden is and that the families donate so generously. I know the rigorous, you know, um, process that you go through to make sure that these grants are looked into and that these are projects that are gonna be used throughout our school district. Um, it's such a wonderful organization that continuously supports our schools and enhances the learning of all of our students and really supports our teachers and it's just, it's a great collaboration and a great effort and I I just really want to say a great bit of thanks on behalf of the board. We really, really appreciate all your efforts. So does anyone else want to say anything? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really, really appreciate it.
Okay, so um now I I want to move into um the part of the superintendent's report where we're gonna talk about um safety and security and I just, I want to begin by um the, this is a a really difficult time for our families. I remember when um Newtown happened and my s- my son was in kindergarten and my, I had I just wanted to go pull him out of school and um so I I'm right there, you know, my kids are in these schools and I I understand the fear and I understand the desire to do whatever we can to try to prevent incidents from happening in our community. And since I've been here, safety and security has been at the top of my priority list and of the Board of Education's um expectations of me. And we've taken some real steps to make our district safer. We've had two audits, um, one, two of Greeley specific, actually, we've had three of Greeley. Um, and then one full audit of the entire district this past fall. Uh, we've had um two community surveys, one in the spring of twenty eighteen and in the fall of just this past fall to get some feedback on our progress. We've had a district-wide task force um right when I, right after I arrived to talk about, you know, what what we're doing in the in our district to make sure that we're providing a safe space for our staff and for our students and we made some significant adjustments. We we added cameras. We didn't have cameras. We had cam- we added cameras inside and outside. We added person traps at the elementary and middle schools. And uh we increased uh, we added a part-time security supervisors. And then it Greeley, we add, we had two task force, one in the spring and now we have one going on this February and we added a resource, a school resource officer who increased our personnel. Uh, we have a vehicle checkpoint now and we added an electronic locking system for all of our doors. Uh, we've provided targeted training in SEL and and DEI work to increase student sense of belonging and adult connections and we're still continuing to work on that based on our feedback from our kids. We've had comprehensive risk assessment training for our psychologists and our social workers. Uh, we've had a a tremendous relationship with the Newcastle PD and we've had them involved to support families and to assess student risks when when appropriate. Uh, before I got here, there was an anonymous alert system already in place, but we added central office oversight. So there was two eyes on that. Someone from the district office and someone at the building level just to make sure that we were completely covered. Um, we're working with our first responders on coordination and drill practice and we have a drill coming up this spring on onsite. Um, and then our our buildings are in regular meetings uh with a regional safety expert to support our training to make sure that our our spaces um are safe and and that we're responding to our needs based on the different infrastructures um throughout the district and the six buildings. In this year's budget, we have security needs that have been identified through our audit that we're addressing. We're continuing our SRO program at Greeley. Uh, we're continuing having our security personnel on all of our campuses. We're gonna start installing door alarms. That was a recommendation from the audit. We're increasing our camera coverage at the secondary level in some spaces that we feel like we needed. Uh, we're addressing some issues with the side of the gym around the test courts and parking lot concerns. We're continuing to support our SEL work. Um, we're funding and and we're repairing, we've prepared uh funding to address additional areas identified by Greeley and and because they currently have a safety task force meeting as a result of the Capitol project not being supported by the community where um, we had multiple audits suggesting that we move forward with a single point of entrance and as you know, that that wasn't that wasn't approved. But we also, and we also have targeted training based on Al Terrace's independent audit in each of the six buildings based on needs that they were identified to to um continue that training that we know is so critical and making sure that our buildings are safe. And then finally, the community did approve some safety and security enhancements, most notably that this we're adding electronic um door locking systems in our K buildings, just like we already have it at Greeley. And so this is what we've budgeted for tonight. Um, that's being presented within the budget, but I know, I know that this is not it, for some of our community members, they don't, do not feel like this is enough. And I can, I completely understand that position. And there has been many emails requesting that we place police officers in in our five other buildings. And I understand that. I understand that request. Um, and that is, that has not been the direction that we've taken as a district. Um, and we've made that decision based on really three main components. The first is we haven't had an audit say that that was that was recommended for us to do um at any point. And we've had, we've had multiple um experts engage with us about our safety and security protocols here at the at the at the building. Um, based on the research around school safety, training and infrastructure adjustments are the recommended places for us to to place our resources. So that's been at the forefront of all of our decision-making around how we would move forward in our district. And then finally, um I had shared with you that we had we had um two opportunities for the community, students, staff and parents to provide feedback on an SRO and um or an armed personnel in our school and we had high response rates even this fall um compared to other uh, because we had an independent survey that was an organization provide this survey for us, so we would make sure that the results were independent of the district. And and I just want to share while um we do receive positive, we did receive positive ratings on our security and there was significant um improvement from the first administration to the second. Um, there are feelings in the, in our community that we are susceptible to a a threat, which is understandable based on what's happening within our our community across the country. But there was a real mixed reaction on how we should address this. And we specifically um asked, you know, what people felt would make the most of a dis- a difference in terms of um feelings about safety and it really aligned with the research that, you know, our students and our faculty and our community noted training of our faculty and staff and really clear protocols. And I know that there's been some um feedback around how we asked this question, but armed personnel in our school buildings was not something that was widely supported through this survey process. And I also want to share that while the um, and this was all presented back in November, so you can certainly go to the meeting and get the full report. But I I would share with you that um there are a group of um stakeholders who feel very strongly that we should have police in all of our buildings and there's a group of stakeholders who feel like absolute opposite of that. Um, so it it, the conclusion from our surveyor is that um that those results suggest that utilizing school funding to institute this measure would not be widely accepted by the community. So that's something that we all need to continue to think about. So I share that knowing that, you know, we we will consider we will continue to take feedback, um, we'll study it. Um, we continue to be um looking at current research on on what we need to be thinking about with our safety and security. Uh, but we have to be really deliberate on how we, how we move forward. And so um while I know that there'll be disappointment in the audience tonight that I'm I'm not coming forward and saying we're adding SROs in this in this budget. And we are in a place where we do need to move forward and adopt the budget tonight that that, but that doesn't mean that the conversations don't continue. And so um I did want to share that outside of the the budget presentation. And so at this point, I I and I shared this last night as well. And I I do appreciate and I understand the emails that have come in and 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 I appreciate the way that the emails are being framed today versus um before people had this information. Um, and I and I understand how challenging this is for everybody and and for the community, but um I do feel like it's important that we all have information that we're using to make recommendations and decisions moving forward, so.
Um, as I said, thank you, Christine, and I know you um presented this last night and uh I appreciate you sharing this with the community tonight. Um, I think it is important to share it now. This is just an odd coincidence of timing that we are, we have to, for timing reasons, approve our budget tonight. But as Christine stated, this conversation on safety continues. It always continues. Um, and because we did get a lot of emails, I did, I did want to you know, just speak a little bit to um how the board functions in this respect and give other board members a chance to mention something about how we address safety and security, um, just so that the community understands how we are coming to these decisions that make their way into the budget. Um, the first thing that I wanted to say is that, and I I know I've said this before, all all of us up here are parents. Um, I was a parent in this district for almost twenty years before I became a member of the board. I've I've raised three children in this district and um I did not have to put a nine-year-old on the bus the day after the Nashville shooting. Uh, so I I I, but I have been there. And I did receive a frightening call from my daughter at college this fall telling me that a friend of hers was in lockdown at another university and was terrified because there was a shooter on campus and her friend was unharmed. But that incident did not end without casualties. So this is personal for all of us up here. And I know that there are members of this community who are advocating strongly for SROs at all of our district schools. We received the letters from a number of you and we understand, we really do understand. I do feel it's important to state that, and and I know in in your advocacy that um we have gotten some statements that there are a number of, you know, s- specific neighboring communities that either have SROs in all or some of their schools. I I just feel it's important to say that some of that information that has been passed around is is unfortunately just plain incorrect. Um, I'm not going to detail that out actually for security reasons and it really doesn't matter right now for these purposes. Uh, uh, what we want to say up here is that we understand, we understand how you feel and we understand what you're saying and feeling. It's all very scary. But I did want to say that when you elected all of us, your your fellow community members, your fellow parents, your neighbors, et cetera, when you elected us to represent you, we we come with a duty to act with both our hearts and our minds. Um, we have a duty to act mindfully and responsibly. And in order to do that, we try and get as much information as possible so that we can keep all of our children as safe as possible. Safety has always been paramount to all of us, period. During my six years on the board and to reiterate some of the things that that Dr. Ackerman said, we we we've not stopped talking about safety. We've had two safety audits. I took part in the Safety and Security Task Force in the aftermath of Parkland. I've spent years on the Health and Safety Committee. I've seen our fellow board members and administrators attend safety lectures and conferences so that they can bring back critical information. And I think it it's just important for the community to hear that i- if any of this information from any expert, any study, any conference, any literature, if any of that had revealed that hiring SROs in every single one of our buildings was the best way to keep our children safe at our school, all of us would be making sure that it is in the budget. It time and time again, the information that has been pointed out to us has pointed us to do all that we're doing, the mantraps, the door locks, the training, the protocols, the drills, the mental health services. All of this is critical. I thank our first responders. They are a critical, critical part of this whole process. I personally went so far this past summer as to co-opt an old friend at an event, a friend who was a former senior official at the FBI. You can be seen talking about these issues on a well-known network on a regular basis. And I grabbed him and I said, can you please sit down with me in light of Uvalde and tell me what I need to be doing in my town to keep our children safe? I will say to you again, and I'm just telling you this information because I do think it's important for everyone to understand it. I was told again that an SRO at all our schools should not be our top priority. I say this to you tonight so that you understand our thinking and our actions and that we are not saying we won't put SROs in our buildings because of money. That's not saying we won't, that's not saying we won't keep discussing it and it's, we are not opposed to making changes. We know there are different views on this. Um, you you saw the survey data that we showed you. There are members of this community who desperately want SROs and say, we can pay for it, we want to pay for it. We do have community members that might vote a budget down for that reason, but we are not making decisions based on a budget vote. We are making decisions based on what we think we need to spend money on to keep our students and staff safe. So I just really felt it was important to explain a bit of our process and our thinking. Um, and that we do understand that, you know, how everyone feels at this particular moment in time. It's not easy for anybody. So um, I'm gonna let any of my other colleagues speak if they so wish.
So as Jane said, we sit up here as board members and we sit up here as parents. And I can say quite honestly that as a board member, I try always to be rational and thoughtful and methodical. And as a parent, I'm terrified. There's no two ways around it. Um, I remember the first day of kindergarten, as excited as I was, I was terrified putting my kid on that bus. And even sitting up here, knowing that this district has done absolutely everything we can do and that we've been advised to do and knowing that everybody has only the best interest of our children and their safety at heart and that everybody would do anything they could, I'm still terrified. Every time that fire siren goes off during the school day, I feel my stomach crunch. And I have definitely been relieved when I've seen police cars heading towards the school turn off onto residential streets. And I think, you know, every day when my kid walks through the door, am I a little more relieved? Yeah. And that probably sounds really weird. Um, but unfortunately, I think it's also a normal part of parenting in America right now. And that's a tremendously unfortunate reality. Um, and so I I want to just admit that part of what I'm saying up here now comes from a place of as a parent being afraid. Um, and to just be honest about that. And so my thoughts are twofold. They are, on the one hand, that I know that this budget has been very thoughtfully drawn up and presented and I feel completely comfortable moving forward with adopting it tonight. Um, and I think that some of what this conversation is, is a a coincidence in terms of the timing of yet another catastrophic shooting with the fact that it happens to be the week that we are adopting a budget. Because I also want us to continue having a conversation around SROs. And I feel very confident that if we determine that that is the right thing to do to move forward, we will figure out how to do it. We have figured out how to do plenty of things before. So I feel completely comfortable saying that we move forward adopting the budget tonight. And that we continue to have the conversation about whether adding an SRO or multiple SROs to the district is the right move going forward in light of another school shooting because I guess the research doesn't bear this out as being the first line of defense. But it's also hard to not ask, does it ever hurt to have another level of defense? Is there if if it could be if it could be a deterrent, even a secondary or tertiary deterrent, is it still worth doing? And that is the conversation that I think is still worth having. Please don't. And I really, so that is, that is where my head is right now. And the truth is also that in addition to being terrified and angry, I'm angry that the task of keeping our children safe is falling to largely a bunch of elected volunteers. And would urge people in higher elected offices to maybe do something to help, or maybe at least pay more for security to public school districts because this shouldn't be coming out of pedagogical budgets. But here we are, and those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Hillary, very much. Anybody else want to say anything?
So I want to echo the comments of my colleagues. Just again, as a parent, I think I've spoken before from this spot talking about the fears that I've had for my own kids on different, all different kinds of fronts. This is just another one that we all face, and that's tragic. And I wish there was something, I don't, just like everyone else, frustrated about the lack of change at things that are above our pay grade. School safety is the top priority for us. I think that's been enumerated here at some length, so I don't need to belabor that point. I want to echo some of what Jane said, and maybe just say it in another way, that I think that, I don't know, this is something, maybe this is too cute for this moment, but something I want to, I try to model with my own kids is, when emotions run high, to try to not make really important decisions, and to try to pause and reflect. And it's not that you want to ignore your feelings of urgency or the frustration, but that when you're in this position where we're responsible for allocating public funds, and we have some responsibility to be really sober-minded about it. And so with that in mind, you know, as has been said, we're looking at what experts are telling us to make the decisions that we're making. And I think that's why I was elected to be in this spot, was that I said I would bring an open mind to looking at all credible evidence about any topic, whether it's security or something else. And I will continue to do that on the security topic. So if there is new evidence that comes to the fore that demonstrates that SROs would make an important difference in how we secure our schools, I would want to see that evidence. I work for a think tank. What we do, I read research reports for a living every day. And the current research right now does not put SROs at the top of the list. And so if we're being responsible and prudent, as we're required to do as part of the budgeting process, then we have to budget accordingly. And we can't ever get everything that we might want. So we have to put in there the top issues that we know will make a difference. And as has been stated, that's training, protocols, locks, single-port inventory, wherever we can get it. Of course, this one building right here is the one where the community wasn't able to support that. But I think we just have to stay the course in being as we've been with all decisions that the district has made. You've seen the amazing work that this team has done all year across a number of issues. All of it's done with thoughtfulness, with great deliberation, with tons of hours spent to make sure that we're doing things in the smartest way possible. I don't think that this is any different. And I hope that we can keep the conversation going, assess new evidence as it comes in, when it comes to whether SROs make sense. But for right now, I think we're doing the best we can. And I too would say, let's advance the budget the way that it's been presented. And let's keep talking about, you know, any other strategies that we can use to continue to make our schools safe. And a safe place to learn, too. I don't think anybody wants our schools to be turned into fortresses. And so there's a balancing act to be done there in terms of how we create a safe space and have a safe space for learning as much as it is about protection. So that's what I have to contribute.
Thank you so much, Ryan.
So I too, I know some people have asked, do you have children in our district? And I do. I have three children at three different levels in our district. One at the high school, one at the middle, and one at the elementary. Training and infrastructure upgrades, education. These are things that we were just talking about. Continuing to have the conversations about having SROs. I just would like to say, we need to, in order to have open discussions on any topic, it has to be two-way in that I'm not here to try to convince anybody that's listening, that will be watching later, that are here tonight. I'm not trying to convince anybody of saying what's the best way or the only way. I think we need to understand that when one presents something, an opinion, it doesn't mean that I'm anti what you're saying necessarily. No one up here is anti-SRO. We're not, the school district is not anti-SRO. We're not anti-cops. We're not anti-first, this is not the case. I am just as afraid. I have kids. I'm a mom. I'm also an educator. I'm also a first responder. And what one person thinks is the best way might not be the same best way for me, given the circumstance or situation. But we have to understand that one specific way is not the only way. There are many ways that we can try. We will, we will never be able to eliminate the horrific things that happen around our country. The only thing we can do is to try to mitigate if it happens here. And I'm the first person to say, no one is exempt. We're not exempt. Why should we be? I'm not exempt. No one, the feeling, the fear of threat. Listen, I sit here as a board member, as a woman, as a woman of color. Do I feel comfortable every time I come up here? No. But this is the world that we live in. And it's not about saying who's right, whose idea is the best, what's, what makes majority of people happy. It's not about any of that. It's thinking through, what are ways that we can move forward in making this the safest place? You know, people say, why do we need money to fix this and that and make, do that? Because if we don't have a safe environment, if we have things leaking from our roofs, and it's ruining the books, and it's going on top of children, that's not, it's not, there's, learning can't happen in an effective way. No one, I've said this before, no one up here, no one behind the scenes, no one is sitting around saying, oh, this, this costs too much money. This is not the, this is not a great idea. No one is saying any of that. In fact, we're asking the same questions that a lot of you might have. And it is possible for us to disagree on certain things, but still make progress on making things better. It is, it's possible. But it has to be both ways. If, if you, if people come up here and say, I pay taxes, great, I pay taxes too. Or I've got kids, I've got kids too. I want peo- I just, I hope that people can be respectful. And people know and understand that we are all here for our children, not just mine. I'm not here just for my children. In fact, my kids sacrifice a lot for me to do this work. We are all here for our children. We want them to learn. We want them to succeed. We want them to feel like they belong. We want them to feel safe. We are here for the kids. And it's okay that we disagree. I'm okay with that on things. I'm not just talking about this one issue. But we can disagree and still make progress, and still make improvements, and still move forward if we decide we're going to listen and have open discussions, where it's not just like, if I don't agree with you, you're anti that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Kaylee.
So, let me start out by saying, you know, I've heard the community, I've read all the emails that we've had come in in the last 24 hours or longer. I've spoken to community members. I've heard tears of concern on the phone. And I understand. I also have children, no longer in the district, but I think once you have children, they're always your children. You're always concerned where they are. As Jane said earlier, this is not a budgetary issue. If it's a budgetary issue, it becomes a very easy thing. That said, let me give you my thoughts and suggestions. Our board has always acted deliberately. We don't make changes like adding five SROs on the fly, so to speak. We want to think about that. We want to understand what the right thing to do for the community is, as my colleagues have set up here. We've been asked to change the budget in the last 24 hours, to change personnel. But we're also asked to pass a budget tonight, or adopt a budget, not a pass, the community passes a budget, we're asked to adopt a budget tonight. Regarding safety, from my point of view, this is my 10th year on the board. We've seen, I've seen a lot of different issues come up. All sorts of safety issues come up. We used to never speak about safety at all. And we still don't speak everything about safety because we want to make sure our schools are safe. We don't tell the community everything that's going on. We discuss with the community things that we're doing. But there are things that go on that you just can't say, otherwise you're, you're, you're letting that, those ideas out. I mean, safety's paramount. It always is. Safety, and as Kaylee said, you need safety, you have to have learning. And if we're not, if children don't feel safe, then they're not going to learn. There were studies done about that also, some psychological studies. So what's the correct solution? I don't know. If I did, I probably wouldn't be sitting here. I'd be writing books or something. So back to the whole idea of budget. Funds are fungible. We can always find money if it comes down to a budget thing. And the way our district works, our personnel decisions are made by the administration, and the Board of Education advises. And those can be reviewed and adjusted. They can always be reviewed and adjusted. Tonight, we, we had a public forum before the meeting really got started regarding our first responders. I know Kaylee's a first responder. We have first responders in the audience. I've spoken to some first responders regarding this, this issue, that, this resolution that we're going to talk. I'll talk about, more about that later. But we rely on first responders as also part of our safety in our schools. They're, they're here if we have fires, if we have, if we need an ambulance, they're always here immediately. My son needed an ambulance once in the eighth grade. I think for him, it was more traumatic to have the ambulance come up to take him to the hospital than it was to have what was going on. But they were there. So let me finish by saying, I would encourage the administration to look at continuing, continually studying, as we're life on learners, continually studying this over the next couple of months. And prior to the starting of the school year next year, make appropriate changes for the benefit of our students and community as you see fit. If we need an SRO, we add an SRO. If we don't need an SRO, we do something else. But I think it's important that, especially right now, that we don't just adopt the budget, pass a budget, and go merrily on. I think we have to look at what we have, study that, and make changes as necessary in the next couple of months to ensure our students are safe, our community's safe, and that our families feel comfortable sending their children to school.
Thank you, Warren. I appreciate what everybody said. I know, you know, this has been a very difficult week for everybody across this country, in this room and across this country. And we just felt that it was really important that the community hear from us. We represent you, and we want you to know what we're doing to continue to represent you. And these conversations will continue. And I know that that is the case because we're committed to it. So Christine, I don't know if you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I just, I need to move on with the rest of the report, but the, this responsibility is tremendous. It's a heavy, it's a heavy weight, and as it should be. And I just want everyone here to know that, take it very, very seriously. And I will continue to because that, you should expect that of me. So it almost seems odd to like transition, but we have to. And so I'm going to do that at this time.
And we thank you all for taking the time to listen.
So I just want to highlight some events that are coming up tomorrow. We have our stage band, and then of course, we're off next week. Officers are closed on April 7th, but the, we will be open Monday through Thursday if anyone needs support. And then we have a number of events in April between this meeting and our next meeting. We have our benefit, our spring benefit for the Scholarship Foundation where they're honoring David Getzke and Steve Walker. We have our spring art gala that we're co-sponsoring with the PTA here at Greeley at April, on April 17th, and that will involve all of our buildings. We're really excited about that. And then, of course, we begin our state testing. We have our STEM Fest here, and then CSF has their benefit on the 28th. So we have a lot happening in the, in the next month ahead. So now we're going to move into our budget presentation. And we're all going to be working together to present this information tonight, as we did last night. And so I'll, I'll start. So the budget up for your consideration for adoption tonight is $138,296,286, or a 3.23% increase. And the budget we're proposing for your consideration is within the tax cap. And just to remind the community, we start planning for our budget for the next fiscal year in the fall. We work with our administrators throughout the course of the fall semester, determine what our needs are, and we begin presenting to the Board of Education in January. And then in March, we do multiple presentations, which can all been found, find, which you can all find online, that go more into depth to each of the components of the budget because tonight is a broader overview. And then on May 3rd, we'll have a hearing where we will present the budget again to the public. And the library board will also present their budget that evening as well. And our vote is scheduled for here at Greeley from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 16, 2023. And our budget is based on our three strategic questions. The first is centers on making sure that our budget is fiscally responsible. The second is to ensure that we are providing a program for all of our students that encourages deep thinking, creativity, and supports problem-solving skills, working collaboratively, and that our students are actively participating in our learning. And then our third question that was added recently focuses on providing an environment that supports social, emotional learning throughout our district. And we have a few bottom lines when we're budgeting that we make sure that we adhere to. The first is we keep our students at the center of all of our decisions. We present a budget that preserves and expands our academic and so- We present a budget that preserves and expands our academic and social emotional program. We continue to monitor our class sizes, and we'll talk about how we're going to do that later on in the presentation. We prioritize our infrastructure needs, we are mindful of our residents that feel like their taxes are too high, so we have to think about that when we're planning for the future, and we're in the process of creating a new strategic plan, and so we have to make sure that we have enough flexibility in the budget to be able to support what the target areas are identified moving forward. And we anticipate that that will be presented at the June meeting to the community. And so now we're going to move over to the curriculum instruction presentation, so Adam will take over.
All right, so I know most of this information you've seen before, so I'm going to move pretty quickly through it, but just to highlight a few of the the key points in terms of the curriculum and instruction budget, I did want to share some data, you can see here, this is the last full year of data that we have, we test our students in maps in the fall, in the winter, and then again in the spring. So this is twenty-one, twenty-two, just so you can see that curve of student learning across first through eighth grade, and that's what we like to see, that nice slope up towards the right is exactly what we want to see across every grade and both in math and ELA. You can also see, this is our over years, grade one through eight, that black line that's there is the national norms, you can see how our students in Chappaqua compared to those national norms and exceeded across the board. So it's another graph that shows the strength of the faculty, staff and students and community support here in the district. And then I have another slide that shows how the students kind of cluster into these categories of low, low average, average, high average and high, and you can see that kind of normal distribution skewed over to the right, which is positive because we have majority of our students scoring high average and high in every grade in both math and ELA, I'm going to share, this is math data, I'm going to show ELA in just a second. This, you can see a similar graph to math, this is the ELA scores, again, that black line is the national norms, and you can see how that line moves across with regard to the Chappaqua class student performance. And again, you see that distribution where most of our students are in that high average or high range across the board in the LA as well. Right here, you can see how our students rank on the New York State assessments in grades three through eight, you can see the grades on the bottom, we're scoring above the ninety-fifth percentile pretty much across the board, certainly above the ninetieth percentile. And as they get up towards seventh and eighth grade, it's actually up towards the ninety-eighth percentile across the state, so you see that strength coming out of middle school when the students then ultimately enter Greeley. Here you can see our regions exam results, it gets a little bit more complicated because the exams were canceled in two thousand and twenty due to the pandemic, and then they were optional, so it's hard to track this data over time, but I did want to share the strength, these are not passing rates, these are actually average scores on the exams, that's the student average score on those regions exams. And then you can see some of our data from the Greeley class of two thousand and twenty-two, we don't yet have this data for two thousand and twenty-three, I'll share it next fall when I give the, the performance report to the board, but you can see the, the strength of the Greeley graduates here, you see the mean ACT scores is an amazing twenty-nine and a half. And you see the SAT scores with a thirteen, thirty-seven, and you can see both the right, reading, writing and math scores there to the right side, you see twenty-nine national merit, committed students, five semi-finalists, five finalists. And as you anticipate, almost all of our students here at Greeley go on to higher education in college after Greeley. All right, and here you have the AP exam results, you can see the AP exams and then also the exam count and the median score, it shows you, or I'm sorry, the mean score shows you the strength of our AP programs, we don't offer all of these AP courses, however, some, in some cases with the smaller numbers, the students will challenge themselves to take the exam. All right, in terms of curriculum highlights, I've, you know, run this, run through this with the board in my previous presentation, but these are the curriculum highlights, you can see things like culturally responsive adjustments to our resources and a variety of curricular areas across the board. K- twelve, middle school world language curriculum revisions, grade nine and ten English curriculum alignment electives at Greeley, things like that, renovation or update to our high school business program with some new courses for next year. Here's some, some shots of our students engaged in our curriculum, both high tech and low tech across the board here with regard to updated curriculum materials. You can see some of the updates to our instructional program, we're still committed to TC units of study, you heard about the recommendation that we make that update, and we've included money in the budget to realign our, our units with the newly published TC units of study. We're going to continue with phonics first in K two, benchmark word study three, five, living environment, we're shifting to grade eight as the board knows, science twenty-one in K four, Smithsonian Science is our new science program in grade five, this is our first year, we'll continue with that. We also fund a variety of the technology by instructional software through the curriculum budget, and then social studies, we're going to continue with TCI K eight, that's our social studies curriculum. Professional learning is a big part of what our budget funds in, in the curriculum office to ensure that our students have access to really powerful instructional experiences, we have to support our staff with a variety of professional learning experiences, so you can see some of those examples here, we support our new teachers for their four years of pre-tenure through Project Seven Twenty, Equity with Insight this year, Wilson Fellows, District Building Equity Teams, things like that, Teachers College Reading and Writing Program, Benchmark Phonics PD and so on and so forth. Here's a list of in-service classes from two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, the majority of these courses are actually offered through, for, from our faculty to our faculty, many of which are professional developers, but in many cases, a faculty member who has an expertise in an area will provide professional development through an in-service course to other faculty, so this is faculty learning from faculty in most cases. So I did want to share with you, we surveyed on the last superintendent conference day, the March Superintendent Conference Day, we surveyed our faculty with regard to kind of quality of working here in the district, and so I did want to share some of those, some of the survey responses with you, you can see here with our faculty, we had three hundred and fifteen responses out of a total four hundred and sixty-seven faculty members, you see the response rate, we actually did this during the day, during the actual superintendent conference day to support that kind of high response rate with our faculty. You can see the staff survey was a little bit lower, but we pulled the results in total, and you can see here, there was a cluster of questions around each of these four things, so a sense of belonging, you can see sixty-nine percent of our teachers responded favorably to that, and then on the right side, you see these questions are actually nationally normed with like a pool of teachers that are taking the same survey across the country. And you can see the percentile when you compare our students, our teachers' responses with others across the nation, and so you can see a sense of belonging, sixty-nine percent responded favorably, well-being, sixty-three percent, cultural awareness and action. And that has to do with adults feeling comfortable to engage in conversations about culture and race with other adults, and then the second one is to the extent to which they feel students are comfortable engaging in those same conversations, so you can see the sixty-two percent favorable and sixty percent favorable respectively. And then there were some individual questions that we thought were important to share, that the first is that our faculty feel their work matters to them, you can see a ninety-eight percent positive response rate. They feel that their work is meaningful, ninety-four percent felt engaged at work in the last week, eighty-seven percent felt excited at work in the last week, eighty-seven percent, and, and while those are all really high and good scores, we also understand that this is a pretty high-stress environment for, for the vast, for the majority of our employees, I was actually surprised to see that was only fifty-two percent, but that's still something that gives us pause with regard to how we can support our faculty and staff with managing that stress, this is, this can be a high-stress environment, a lot of it is expected of all of us, and so we're doing some thinking about that as well. All of these data were shared with the district equity team, and it's going to roll down to the building equity teams, and they're going to do some work unpacking these data and coming up with a bit of an action plan to address these things and kind of leverage it at the building level. All right, so I also wanted to highlight transitioning into technology, we had Josh Colwell block maybe for the final time presenting the technology budget, but I took a couple of his slides just to highlight here, you can see the digital learning goals on the right side, as well as many of the components that make up the instructional technology budget over on the left side. We are happy to report that all of our steam spaces are up and running, when we had first opened them, they opened, and then the pandemic struck, and we had to, excuse me, repurpose them for a variety of things, there were like cohort spaces, and we had all kinds of distancing requirements, so we couldn't use them as intended for a little while, so we're now happy to report that they are fully being utilized across the board, we have maker spaces in the elementary school, middle school, steam spaces, and then at the high school, a whole steam building, so you can see now fully utilized and including some of the heavy machinery at the, or all of the heavy machinery at the middle school, which is exciting. Here you can see our technology integration into the teaching and learning program, and you know how we feel about balancing those high-tech experiences with low-tech experiences, and to make sure that that learning environment is an active learning environment for all of our students. You see the four major categories with regard to the impact on the technology budget here, and then I just wanted to remind the board and the community that we have also worked in a device refresh, which is important for us to make sure our students have access to devices that work well and support their learning, and so you can see the refresh in the middle column there for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. Those grades K one, two, five and six are all going to get new devices, we keep track of the age of each device, we can sell back devices that are kind of gently used, and we're ready to recycle out of the program and then bring in, use that money to bring in some new devices.
Right now, we're going to move over to Andrew Grisilia, who will go over our enrollment projections and sections for next year.
Sure, thank you. Pointing in the right direction, here is our enrollment projections over ten years, from two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year to the two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. The enrollments that occurred and the enrollments that are anticipated, and you'll see the place where we are now in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, moving over to twenty-three, twenty-four, and you can see from that that we're expecting a small reduction in the total enrollment across the district of about twenty-nine, at least at the time that the sectioning was done, these are the projections being used, and you can see it by grade level here, some stayed the same, some decrease and a couple actually increased, but the net is a loss of about twenty-nine students. And then here are the district class size thresholds that we work with when designing the number of sections that we allocate to each grade level. So for kindergarten, the threshold is twenty students, for first grade is twenty-three students, for grades two through four, twenty-five students, and through grades five through twelve, twenty-eight students. So working within those, you take the expected enrollment at each grade level, you allocate sections, and you come up with an average class size. And this is the, this is the more specific slide detailing the elementary schools by grade level, what we anticipate in terms of enrollment, how many sections have been allocated per school and per grade level, and then the resulting average class sizes, all of the average class sizes are within the threshold, at threshold are those kindergarten places where the kindergarten classrooms are, we have projections for them, we obviously don't have a class right before kindergarten with all the students to use, that is your projection, and we have three positions in the budget that were planned to be able to put into the kindergarten classrooms in each of the three elementary schools. Should the enrollment exceed what we could then staff, or sorry, what is the class size threshold in each class, so we already know now at Grafflin, where we had started with four sections in each kindergarten in each school, we now know we are going to offer five sections, use one of those three positions, and while the the period is, has ended for, for families to officially register, they will continue to enroll as students come in, we'll continue to watch those and make adjustments as necessary to kindergarten across the other elementary schools should we need to. This moves up to the middle school with a similar slide, last year to this year, both Bell and Seven Bridges anticipated enrollment per grade level, the number of sections allocated to each of those grade levels and the resulting average class size. We do see, and I know some questions came up with the forum yesterday, there's, there is a difference in projecting enrollment between Bell and Seven Bridges, Bell has projected a hundred and three students more than Seven Bridges. That's being addressed with an additional four sections allocated to Bell than Seven Bridges to, for, for that anticipated enrollment. And you can see that those sections appear in fifth grade and sixth grade where there's seven sections each versus the six sections at Seven Bridges. And then in eighth grade, there are eight sections versus the six sections in Seven Bridges, and I know there have been some questions about, you know, why six to eight, why not seven at certain sections, it's important to know that in the seventh and eighth grade levels due to teacher certifications, secondary certifications, subjectory certifications, you really deal with even numbers. So you're really talking about eight or six, you really don't have seven in the, in the section, you can do that in fifth and sixth grade because teachers are certified in, for, as elementary teachers and are certified to teach all subject areas, and so you can have some sections, we can use, you can use these odd numbers rather than the even numbers. Okay, and then here's the slide on high school by grade level with anticipated and projected enrollment here, and of course, scheduling in high school is different than scheduling, very different than scheduling in elementary school, students have a lot of choice over the classes that they take, and you expect fluctuation between an individual section of one class in one place, and maybe in another, you can't balance them across the whole, because a student may choose another class, or a number of students may, and it will affect different parts of their schedule. But when you take the core academic classes we have here, and you take the number of students that are enrolled, and then you divide it by the sections, you get a projected class size for English, Math and Social Studies and Science, we're presented there. All of the anticipated class sizes now are within our thresholds that we operate within.
So now we're going to transition to Jamie, who will review the special education related services budget.
Good evening. So in special education, all of our decisions are based on student needs and IEPs, and we are always considering the least restrictive environment, equitable opportunities, specialized instruction, and the academic and social development of our students. We're also considering and thinking about the skills and attributes of a Greeley graduate. Under IDEA, we have disability categories, they're listed in this chart. What's particularly noteworthy here is that the majority of our students with IEPs are classified as learning disabled or with another health impairment. And another health impairment might be something where you have some medical condition that is causing some learning challenges. Something like Attention Deficit Disorder might fall within that other health impairment. Also noteworthy on this slide is the autism category, where we had an increase of eight students, as well as our emotional disturbance category where it doubled and went from four to eight. Both of those increases are consistent with, with what is happening all over our country. Most of our students with IEPs are receiving their instruction and education in our district and in our classrooms, but there are times when students need to receive their education out of district, and so we currently, or last school year, we had twenty-one students who were receiving instruction and education out of, outside of Chappaqua, and we had two students who were receiving their instruction at home. And that makes up our total of three hundred and sixty-nine students with IEPs. And finally, what you see on this side is we continue to have a low classification rate. And yet, also on this slide are the things that we're doing to continue to improve. So for the upcoming school year, we are going to be prioritizing resource room in our high school, the integrated co-teaching model at our middle school, and social skills for all students with an autism diagnosis in our elementary schools. So you'll see that the professional development listed underneath that is helping to equip our teachers with the skills and strategies necessary to improve in those areas. And we also continue to build and create a multi-tiered system of support, which is the pre-referral process that we have in our district.
Now Andrew will move through our financial slides.
Thank you, Dr. Ackman, and just briefly thank you to the Board for your kind words earlier this evening, it was a pleasure working with you all, and I have no doubt that Josh Bach will be very successful in this seat going forward. In terms of the, the financial slides, much of this you've seen before, so I won't belabor too much of the detail, but as Dr. Ackman shared earlier, our overall budget is going up three point two, three percent. As you see in this chart, in digestible kind of chunks, we've highlighted our salaries and our benefits each going up two point four, three point two percent district-wide for all areas of our programs. Debt service is showing a decline, as we talked about in our bond presentations, we anticipated that, and we use the capital transfer line down at the bottom of this chart to offset that decrease as we prepare ourselves for the new debt coming on with the, the bond that was passed in November. Operations and maintenance significantly Operations and maintenance significantly impacted by inflation, right? Fuel prices have significantly challenged that department as have materials and supplies related to our facilities, maintenance, our cleaning program and, and all of the, the work that our team does there. Transportation, we've reflected a 4.3% increase based on our current expectations for our contract transportation needs. Jamie's Department of Special Education, again, this is the non-salaried piece of special education. We have a slight decrease there. The staffing is included up above, so I don't want to let anyone believe that we're declining in special education expenditures next year. We, we have staffing included as well up above. BOSI Services, you see an increase there. It is including some technology items that are currently in the technology line in the current year's budget. We'll be using BOSI's next year in order to continue to not only procure those services in a different, more effective way for our district, but to generate some BOSI's aid for us, which will benefit us the following school year. And then really all of our per pupil spending, our, our supplies and materials and consultants, the building level that we use based on an allocation to our, our schools is going up in the amount of about 18.6%, but the significant increase there is really in some of our newer spaces, where we're finding some equipment and supply needs to really support those areas of steam, art, science, and technology. At the student level, you'll see some increases there across the district. And, and that's the, the largest kind of numbers in our budget. In the other category, those are things like legal fees, administration, supplies, materials, those types of items. The next chart really just shows how that is broken up as a percentage of the overall budget. And we continue to see that salary and benefits are over 71% of our budget. You know, we are in a people business, and that is significantly where we are spending the, the bulk of our, our funds each year. In terms of revenues, we are at the property tax cap. It is a tax cap compliant budget. We're utilizing every dollar that, that, that calculation allows us to, to ask the voters with a simple majority. So 2.1% increase in our revenue in that line. A state aid is going up 8.4%. One of the key drivers of that number, as I mentioned in the previous presentation, is building aid. Some of our older bond projects have now been closed out, and we've settled some litigation around those. We're now starting to see the, the building aid come to fruition, which is helpful for our budget. We've left appropriate fund balance flat year over year. Sales taxes going up thanks to inflation and, and tax rate increases in the sales tax. The district gets a percentage of that from the county. So we're seeing those increases there. Charges for services, use of money or property and miscellaneous income bring up the, the remainder of our budget. And certainly the increases in interest rates are benefiting us in our use of property and money. As interest rates at the Fed have gone up, so have our deposits at our local institutions. Again, real property tax is making up about 86 and a half percent of the overall funding of our budget, followed by state aid and then the other categories that I mentioned. Inflation just being what it has been, as you all know, you live it. We are seeing, hopefully, we've come over the hill here on inflation, I would hope. I know that the February number was a bit lower than the, the January 6% number. And I think it is important to note though that some of those impacts are still being felt in, in our increases as we renew contracts, as we see new pricing for our supplies and our vendor prices. So that's why you still see some of the increases that are happening in our budget as we catch up to that inflation. In terms of our tax analysis, I went over this when we went over the non-instructional budget. But when we split our property tax levy of 119 million across our two towns, we have to use the assessed information and the equalization rate that we receive from the, from the state and the town. So roughly 90.7% of our levy will be raised through Newcastle taxpayers and 9.3% through Mount Pleasant. As we've done the calculation year over year, and the equalization rate in particular has shifted again this year. Now in the other direction, the estimated tax rate impact for our Mount Pleasant taxpayers is a decrease right now, based on the information I have, and, and a slight increase of 2% in the town of Newcastle. Contingency budget, if the budget were to fail, we would need to have a zero dollar tax levy increase, right? So no increase on the levy, that would mean we'd have to make reductions of about 2.467 million. If the budget fails, the board could adopt that contingency budget immediately, or we go out to revote. And the board can decide to go out with the same budget, a, a higher budget or a lower budget. And then again, if that budget were to fail in June, we'd be forced to go to that contingency budget for the following year. One new slide you haven't seen, right, is just, and it's an eye chart. So I've tried to find the most legible version of it. It's really just, it's, it's all of the data you've seen in our other presentations. This is what will be included in our budget mailer at the end of the year. So the budget notice is an important piece of our process, as is the property tax report card, which largely uses the same information that's on the screen right here, showing the, the current year budget, the proposed budget in the center column, and then what the, the contingency budget would look like if we had to go down that path. And it breaks down the admin program and capital components of our budget at the bottom. All of this detail will be in much more detail in the budget book. Once the budget's adopted, we'll have that published and, and you can see that online and by picking it up in the district office. And this is just the second page of the same, same form. And that's.
So in summary, our budget is a 3.23% increase over our current year's budget. And we feel like it's responsive to our board's strategic questions. It meets our operating standards, supports our physical, social, and emotional safety within the context of our schools. It maintains our professional learning program and adjusts our personnel based on enrollment. It's below the tax cap to make sure it's fiscally sustainable and it adheres to your class size contractual requirements. So I just want to go over some voter information. And the best thing to do, if you have any questions, is simply to reach out to Lisa and she'll be able to help you. So if you're not sure if you can vote in the upcoming election, call Lisa. She can check for you and she can help you if you're not registered. And you have to be a US citizen, resident of our school district for 30 days and at least 18 years of all to be eligible to vote. You can register to vote during normal business hours in our office. So you can certainly call Lisa, stop by, and you can make an appointment. And applications for absentee ballots is for electing board members and voting on the 23, 24 school budget. Labor budget may be obtained from Lisa as well, or you can go on our website. And just, we have two, as you learned earlier today, and as Jane and Warren announced earlier in the budget season, we do have two open seats in the Board of Education. There are two terms beginning on July 1st, and there are criteria that you must meet in order to run for the Board of Education. And again, we'll have this posted on our website, but you can certainly reach out to Lisa to talk about that process. She'd be more than happy to help you. And so here we are tonight, and we are, have the budget up for your consideration for adoption. And then our next step in this process is our required hearing. And I would just encourage the community, if you have any questions or comments, you can certainly reach out to us by email or you can call Andrew or I. This is, this is one of many presentations for the board. So I, I'm not sure if you have any additional questions or if we're able to just continue on with the agenda. But we're certainly, at this point, we're, we're done presenting. I want to thank my colleagues for helping work together to present a budget for your consideration this, this evening, and particularly the business office who, who spends hours making sure that we're presenting something for your consideration that meets all of our needs. So thank you.
I have a question or a couple. Andrew, I know you. What do you see us getting from the state budget? Do we anticipate any additional funding? Apparently Governor Hochul said she's going to commit $34.5 billion to education. How's that going to go with, you know, with foundation aid and whatever? Where do you see that landing us?
So short term, right, I think the governor's aid proposal, just what this budget is, what this budget is based on, I think it is a fairly accurate depiction of what we'll see next year, regardless of the deliberations that happen. I think that we have given a conservative estimate based on that data that we have from the state. I will say that if we were to get additional state aid, right? I've shared with the board my concerns about the use of fund balance. My recommendation would be to, to just offset that fund balance usage with that additional revenue if I was asked to make a recommendation in that regard.
That was my second question, replacing fund balance. Okay, thank you. Going into Andrew. I've heard from community members concerned about class sizes, especially the difference in class sizes between Bell and Seven Bridges. I know you spoke about that a little bit. Can you, other than redistricting, which is a bigger topic than we're ready to talk about tonight, which would maybe something we have to talk about eventually? Can, can you explain to me how we, just explain, I guess, the process? And that, that all the children in the district will get a fair and equitable education, I guess, based on class size. I think it looks okay, but I think there's some community concern.
Sure. I would say the larger question of the difference in enrollment in the two middle schools is something to, that would take a much longer time to study. And I know that the strategic planning for the next five years has that topic on, on the table and is, and is looking into that, and that would be a much larger process. In the short term, when you do have a discrepancy like this, where you have a little bit over 100 students anticipated to be at Bell than Seven Bridges, it makes sense to allocate more resources to that. The allocation of four more sections makes sense. You know, if you think of a, a, a teacher teaching about 25 students at a time, even though at a middle school they'll have far more students on their caseload, 25, four sections does really cover that about 100 students more potentially that would be at a school. So in that way, it's a real equitable distribution. Now, when you take a look at any particular grade level or the fact that grades, you know, the average class size is, is not at the 25, right? So that, that would give you a little bit more variation between, you know, so that actually, you know, an additional section may not take on 100 students and 25 each might be taking on 80 or 90 students because we're not at capacity in each class. So there would be some variations, but it's a really good plan to ensure equity across class sizes. Now, there are going to be some discrepancies between them, but it fits all within our, our thresholds and makes good sense.
Any additional questions?
I just wanted to ask like one follow-up to Andrew on that point. Like, I, I think it might have blown by people the issue of the elementary certification and the secondary certification. Would, would you mind just doing that part for those who haven't heard this before?
With the, with the odd and even number, yeah. I'd like to break that down. I agree. Thank you, Warren.
So when we're talking about the estimated sections here, and we think about core subject area certifications like the math, science, English, and social studies. At the seventh and eighth grade level, your English teachers teach English and right, your social studies teacher, that's how they're certified. And one way to do that is like, for instance, in a grade level that has eight sections of that, you would have two four-section teams. So one team, you have English, social studies, math, science, English, studies, math, and science. If you just take out one of them, now you have a hole that has to be covered, and it's very difficult to do that, right? So but if you take out two, you can handle that in a couple of different ways. You can have dual certified teachers, you could have a, an English, social studies teacher and a math, science teacher in a team of two by themselves, or a larger team of six, and that would all work together. And so you really are working within those even numbers. When you move to fifth and sixth grade, teachers are certified as elementary teachers, and they're certified to teach all subject areas. So then what you can have is you can have, let's say, in a group of, a grade level of like seven sections, you could have one four-person team, each teacher teaching a different subject area. You could have a three-person team, and all three of those teachers teaching an additional subject area like social studies. You could have an English and a math and a science teacher. All of them can teach social studies as well, they're certified to do it, and that works that way. And then there's other permutations, like the fifth grade with the, you can work it out, but that's essentially the, the difference. I hope that was clear.
I think that helps. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That helps a lot.
I think the other thing that I did want to mention is that I think that clarification is good, but I think also parents maybe have not known that because we do start middle school at fifth grade, we think that the teachers are certified middle school teachers, but that's not the case because the state recognizes and certifies teachers by elementary, which is K to six. And middle schools where they choose an actual subject to specialize in is starting in seventh grade. And that is the difference, and that's why, even though we have fifth and sixth graders in middle school buildings, the teachers themselves are actually elementary school certified teachers. And therefore, the kids are technically still elementary school kids, right? And they should be, right? They're nine. So, I mean, I think that's just something that I think people are, might not be aware of.
Right. If they're not in education, they don't understand that.
And things have, certifications have changed. It could have been pre-K through two and three to five, and it, it has changed over time. But I think that's just something, and, and elementary certifications, those teachers are required to be able to teach all five subjects across the board. And you don't specialize in a specific subject. So I think that clarification was helpful. Thank you.
The only other thing I'd share that we shared last night is that we are going to provide AIS instruction at the elementary level before school because some of our families really like to take advantage of that model. But for those who are qualified for AIS and aren't able to make it to school in the morning, we're going to restructure to be able to provide that during the school day. For math, yep. So I just, I, I did want to share that publicly, even though it's not embedded in the slides. And thank you for that feedback that we received from the community.
I, I had one more along those lines I, I thought we should mention too, because we, we haven't spent a ton of time in the last couple of meetings talking about moving the living environment class down. And as Jamie was talking about the co-teaching, we just want to emphasize how we're going to do that. Jamie, would you mind, you've stated it before, but like, how are we going to do the ICT with the new curriculum coming down to the middle school?
So I, integrated co-teach ICT means that there's a special ed teacher and a general ed teacher in the classroom, and both are equally responsible for all kids in that, in that classroom. So for the middle school, we're going to have ICT in ELA and math, K through seven, and then in, also in science in eighth grade. And that'll be every other day in social studies and science other than eighth grade. Does that make sense? I don't know, am I going to say it in kind of a confusing way?
In living environment.
Environment.
Right.
Yeah, in living environment.
That's the phrase I was looking for.
In living environment, yes. If, if, if we end up running the science ed class, it will not have a co-teach, the co-teaching model. And the thinking around that is because the living environment course is a high school level course, and if they were to take it in high school, we offer the ICT model in living environment in the high school.
So living environment and algebra will have co-teachers in, in, in the middle schools. Thank you, Jamie. Any other questions? All right, so that is the end of our budget presentation. Thank you, everyone. I know that, that was long and comprehensive, and I appreciate everyone's patience.
No, but I, I just want to say again that, I mean, we see this all the time, that how early this budgeting starts, how much time and effort is put into this, it's a tremendous amount of work, and everyone does it in an extremely thorough manner. So I just want to say thank you for the hard work that everybody does to put together this budget. It is certainly not an easy task, and it is much appreciated that. I know we get a lot of opportunities to see it, so the community can tune in at different times. But it's, it's a lot of money, it's a big budget, and it's important for the community to see where their tax dollars are being spent. So thank you all. Okay, that moves us on to committee reports. Does anyone have anything for this evening?
Warren and I were at the Health and Safety Committee meeting yesterday. Obviously, we've talked extensively about safety this evening already. The only thing I would add is that we have a really excellent and comprehensive team who are working on, as Kaylee mentioned earlier, real-time trainings, which are an integral part of any preparedness plan. And without obviously going into detail, they are committed to and actively participating in and planning for additional real-time safety training so that all of our first responders are on the same page, know all of the same plans, and are hopefully never going to need to use anything they learned.
Thank you. We also, we had a community, Communications Advisory Committee meeting that Kaylee and I are on that committee. And we met with Christine and Josh and Adam Schoenbart to talk about a new website that we're working on for the district. And it's incredibly helpful for us, as we always say, to have the community members on this committee because especially in a meeting like this, it's, we really are going, it's important to us that we have a website that can be easily navigated by all of our community members, especially our parents. There are so many technological upgrades with our systems and services and apps and everything. And we're going to upgrade our website as well. But it was great to get input on how it's used by our families. it was great to get input on how it's used by our families, what they want to see, you know, quick links, easy ways to find information they want. So I felt like it was a really productive session, and I want to thank Josh and Adam for working on that, and we're going to continue to work on that. It's not being rolled out yet, but we will keep everybody posted when it, when it will be. Anything, any other committees? Nothing? That brings us to our public comment period. We always welcome public comments. We ask that everyone come up to the mic and state their name. We also ask, and actually require, that everyone limits their comments to three minutes. Also, as we always say, that we know that's not a huge amount of time. We are always available by phone or email, and at the conclusion of the public comment period, the board members may have a discussion amongst themselves about any matters that are addressed during that period. So welcome to come up. Hi, Mike.
Hi. Good evening. Mike Tabelas, proud president of the Chappaqua CCT. Andrew, thanks for all your work here at the district, and it was a pleasure working for you, and I'm sure we'll be able to work with Josh just as well, and I appreciate that. And thank you for your comments for safety and security in our school. It's very important to the teachers as well. Something that's really been bothering us and me, and, you know, keeping me up at night, is the, the retention of our teachers in the district. And I, I just, I'm so proud of the, the work that we do in our district. I mean, we, we work so hard, and, you know, we work so hard with our colleagues and our friends, and, and losing any member of our family is, is devastating. And for safety and security reasons as well, it's nice for the students to have a familiar face to come to every year. And, you know, for the past, you know, several years, we've been losing, you know, a lot of, a lot of our teachers have been resigning, and teaching assistants in other areas of our district. And I just really hope that we could find a way to retain these people. You know, they're special. They work hard. And I know the expectation here is very high, but our, our expectations of our teachers as well in the CCT is very high, and will, willing to work very hard to make that happen. And I appreciate all the conversations. I know I'm, I'm on the phone a lot with, with the members up there on the administration. I appreciate the, the feedback, and, you know, and we'll work hard to meet the needs of the district. And we, I just hope that we could really work together on this to solve a common problem, because there's not a lot of, you know, the, the pool of teachers out there is dwindling, you know? There's people leaving, leaving the profession every day. You know, it's a tough thing to do, to teach students. It is. You know, it's hard, and you've all been there, too, you know, that, that have been sitting up there. So I, I really hope that we can work hard to keep the, the, the teachers that we, that we are hiring and training in our district for a very long time. We would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Hi there. Thanks, everyone. My name is Abby Smith. I'm the parent of two children in district. I'm also a special education attorney, so I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the studies that you've talked about, in particular, the audits that you referenced. I have read many of those. I certainly didn't read this one, but I have read many of them. The sad fact is that the audits that you conducted are already outdated. You asked about data, and you're saying that you're not considering these SROs, School Resource Officers, today because your data suggests that they're not to be prioritized. But what we learned this week, we already have new data. We learned that deterrence is one of the most critical things that can happen in these horrific things. In the shooting that happened, and three children lost their lives, and three adults lost their lives, the shooter first went to a school that didn't have an SRO. They found that there was too much security there, and then moved on to a school that did. So the fact that you're relying on this outdated information to justify these actions and to justify your budget is just unacceptable to the community. We understand the way that you're open to having this conversation. Nobody wants to be having this conversation after our children are dead. So the difference is that while we are here to have the conversation now, you all have shot back to us canned answers. We've gotten the same email. We're comparing notes. We represent families who want more done here. We are asking you to please reconsider the idea of putting school resource officers, not armed personnel, as the survey you chose to put out phrased it, but school resource officers at all of our campuses. The community doesn't understand why Greeley has one and the rest of our schools do not. Of course, this is an open campus. Of course, these children are older. There are lots of other reasons why we need school resource officers at all campuses. You've made it very clear you're not interested in considering this tonight. You want to talk about it. That's great. You want to continue the conversation. That's great. Nobody wants to sit around while you continue the conversation. We are asking you to please make this urgent. While you all did note that this is not a budgetary item, you also noted that it's not a priority item. It's time to make this a priority. It is not fair for our kids to not feel safe. Earlier during one of the meetings, I wasn't there, but I did read notes where one, some, one of the community members said that their children were scared of security officers, and perhaps that's something that one of your audits found. I want to speak from personal experience. Two children who attended school in Brooklyn, every day they greeted their armed personnel at their school with hugs and love. Those were people who our children respected. Those are people our children knew they could go to to feel safe. And sadly, you're not providing that same thing in this very wealthy, very capable district. Again, we are imploring you to please reconsider this to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for everything tonight, and thank you for all that you do.
I'm sorry. Can you just state your name?
Yep.
So we have it?
Okay, I'm there. Have it all written down.
Okay.
My name is Debbie Greshman. I was born and raised here. I'm a Greeley grad, same as my husband. I moved back here to raise our two sons here. Sadly, as we all have talked about, this is not the world that we grew up in. And I stand here, and some other folks stand here, representing a lot of other residents, taxpayers, parents, grandparents in this town. There's only a few of us tonight, and it actually breaks my heart. I think it's because most people didn't know we were here. And so I hope that this is truly the beginning of a conversation. I know it's impossible to change a budget in two days. I know how hard you all have worked, but I really want us all to consider a fair and equitable distribution of SROs, as you talk about equitable distribution of teachers. And, and Jane, you were talking about making sure we're completely covered. I know that there's no guarantees, but we're gathering here tonight to discuss budgets, and families in Nashville are meeting to discuss funerals. So my hope is that it never happens here, and that you are all never in the position of not having done every single thing you could have done to protect each and every child in our school. We've seen the stats. Abby mentioned that we now know that this shooter this week went somewhere and was deterred by an SRO. We're living in a scary world. Our kids are coming home and learning how to run, hide, and fight in school. Nine-year-olds, seven-year-olds are being taught how to protect themselves against shooters, and they're so scared. They're, they're scared children, and it's common sense. Read the data that having SRO is an additional layer of security. It will help deter. I know some surrounding areas do and don't. I know Byram Hills does. They have a roaming SRO. We could start with that. And we know they have it here at Greeley, and I understand Greeley is an open campus and high risk, but the rest of our schools have high risk as well. And I know if you've spent any time on those campuses, you know that. Open fields, open access. And I've heard that the SRO here is going very, very well. She's very well-liked. She was just renewed, and that's really wonderful. But the vast discrepancy of having her at Greeley and not making that investment in the rest of our kids, it just, it doesn't sit well. And I understand budgets are difficult and managing is tricky, but budget should not stand in the way in the safety of our children and our teachers and our coaches. So let's reallocate. Let's start this conversation. If it's a roaming SRO, great. Something shared between schools. Where can we start? Let's reallocate funding efforts. And I'm not just here begging you as a scared parent, but offering to help. So often, we all get upset by the news of the day, and then we move on. We are here, and we are happy to have that conversation, to figure out what we can do. Citing old surveys that weren't worded really well, they confused people saying armed guards. They don't know what that means. We're not talking about malicious style people we see in Grand Central and El Al. These are warm, friendly, caring people who educate. Great. So that's all I-
We can, if you've, if you've finished, but we can, we can allow you to have an additional minute. That's what we're allowed to do, but we have to make a motion. Well, you may move. Second, Ryan. Okay. All in favor? Or you may, you may finish your comments. Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you. I just ask that we read this moment in time as residents. I know I'm one of hundreds in this town, so it's the right thing to do. We have the resources. There are many of us who are willing to have the conversation to make sure the deterrence and all we are doing is the number one best thing we can do for this entire community. So thank you guys again. We hope to be continuing this conversation. I will email you, and I am now 100% committed to helping this happen, and I hope that the rest of you will reconsider past data and surveys. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
My name is Neil Dorman. My wife and I have lived here since, forever, since 1977. Our kids went through the Chappaqua school system from kindergarten through Greeley, and their kids are in the, the school system as well. Over the years, we've paid a lot of school taxes, and I felt that we got a lot of value for it. But there, it was a great school system. It is a great school system, but something has changed, and what's changed is fear. We've articulated that very clearly tonight. Now, I know there's reference to these studies, questionable how current and pertinent they are, and that they don't prioritize SROs over other steps. But do these studies address peace of mind, a very important element in the learning process? And the Chappaqua School District in category after category exceeds national norms. Why can't we exceed national norms in safety and have both the highest recommended steps and what's referred to as a lower tier of steps, SROs? I think we can do both. The statement has been made that this is not a budget item, and therefore there should be a way to find a way, a means of addressing this across the board. Funds, as was stated, are fungible. We trust that you will reflect on the most recent events, on the comments that have been made, and find a way, in this very rich budget, to make safety and peace of mind the ultimate priority, because without those, you really don't have quality education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bria Sossman. Thank you, everyone, for speaking, and thank you for starting this difficult conversation. I'm a mother of two young children in the school district, representing many others, and I am here pleading with you to expand the SRO program to employ fully-trained and armed safety resource officers for all schools in the district. Guns exist. Criminals exist. Mental illness exists. Mass shootings exist. None of these things are going to just magically disappear. Unfortunately, school shootings are going to continue, and they are continuing more frequently. There have already been 39 school shootings since January. Signs declaring gun-free zones do not stop criminals or mentally unstable humans with guns. Cameras do not stop an active shooter. Extensive shooter training, while helpful, is not enough and will not stop an active shooter. You must have a trained armed SRO who will, who is prepared. We defend presidents, celebrities, banks, courts, stores, sporting events, even movie theaters, just to name a few, with security personnel carrying guns. Why not protect our children in the same way? Nothing in this world is more important than the safety and well-being of our children, and this should be a priority. Without an SRO officer, frankly, our children and staff members, they don't even stand a chance. No one wants to believe that anything can happen in their community or in their school, but it can happen anywhere. Let's please keep our children and staff, staff members safe. Let's give them a chance if something unspeakable should happen. Let's not wait until it's too late. Our children are not replaceable. Why should we gamble with their lives?
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all for your comments this evening. We are moving on to approvals and ratifications. Item 3.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the March 22, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion for 3.1? All right, Kaylee, Ryan, a second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? 3.2, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the proposed budget and ratifies the property tax report card for the 2023-2024 school year. I will move 3.2. May I have a second? Hillary? I don't think there's any more questions or comments, but I'll ask anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.1.
I will, I will second. Any questions, comments?
Again, congratulations, Andrew, on your new job. We're going to miss you, and congratulations, Josh, on your new job, and we're glad you're here.
Ditto. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Congratulations, Josh.
Congrats, Josh.
All right. I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.2.
I will second 4.2. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
This brings us to item 5, which is our consent agenda. We use the consent agenda to make a more effective use of our time by adopting in a single motion relatively routine matters, all of which are included tonight in items 5.1 through 5.12, I think. Yes. Any board member has the right to pull anything out of the consent agenda. I want to ask at this time if anyone wants to remove anything from the consent agenda tonight. Okay. We have 5.1 through 5.12, like I said. This really just, the highlights are our CSE summaries, our first responder resolution, which we had the hearing earlier, and I, I just want to thank our first responders again. They are crucial. They are vital. They are incredible volunteers in our community and partners in all of our safety and security measures. We have the CSF InstaGrants and the traditional grants with, which Adam went through, and cooperative bidding regarding BOSEs. We've discussed that previously. That's pretty much a summary of our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to move items 5.1 through 5.12 in our consent agenda? Ryan, may I have a second? Hillary, any questions, comments?
Yes. 5.3, the resolution for the first responders.
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to say, prior to my tenure on the board, this school board approved the original, I guess, I would, I guess, resolution for a discount for the first responders. Since I've been on the board, we passed a resolution to grant veterans a, a discount also, which was great. That was done probably about six years ago. I spoke to a couple of the first responders. I spoke to one of the fire chiefs, and they're very thankful that we would take this under consideration to do this, so.
Right. And as I, I think they mentioned earlier, Governor Hochul changed legislation. It used to be a, a five-year requirement to work for one of these responder organizations. It was lowered statewide, that we were allowed to pass a resolution to allow them a certain tax exemption if they were a part of this organization for two years. And it's a significant commitment. It's not just, you know, being sort of a casual member of this. It is, it is a commitment. It is a lot of hours that has to be verified, and then you do get a tax break, which I think is a very good idea to keep very qualified first responders in our community.
And as we said earlier, the first responders are part of our security.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
They don't, they're not, I wouldn't say first-line security, but they're there when we need them. They're there for your fire issues or any kind of issues, ambulance issues, so.
It's a critical component to our entire safety and security program, so we appreciate their hard work very much. And we thank them, even though they understandably went home. Well, it's a long night, so yes, that's okay. Board members who are also first responders, so thank you, Kaylee and Jane, for both of-
Kaylee's still here.
I'm on the record that I am not, I'm not qualified to receive this, so-
I'm on the record that I am not, I'm not qualified to receive this, so.
Yes, I was.
But you still show up.
I know. I was, I was on, I was on the corps for a couple of years, but when I came on the board, I realized that it was, it was too much going on, but Kaylee has managed to keep both things going, so we appreciate it.
Can I make one other comment?
What?
Which is just that these CSF grants are amazing.
Yes.
And really exciting, and the, the geography cards, I think, are so cool because I think that this hasn't, geography hasn't necessarily been our strongest curriculum point, at least from what I've seen my house. But I think that, I think the tactile nature of it, and the kids being able to really literally get their hands on it and, and see how the pieces fall into place in our world is, is awesome, and it's really exciting, as are the other grants.
It was, everyone was very excited to have a non-tech grant, which you could tell from, from Adam's reaction. So I agree. These are fabulous. So anyone else? All in favor of our consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Fantastic. Okay. That brings us, there's nothing on facilities or financials.
There is something on facilities.
Wait. Oh, there is facilities. Oh, I didn't know.
So at the last meeting, I asked Joe what he knew about a, I guess, a line item for the, the library, that they wanted to change the facade of the library. Joe didn't know anything about that. I reached out to the director of the library, and then Jennifer Fahy, the president of the library board, called me up. And since Joe has spoken to him, I believe Christine has also spoken to him. So they're looking at understanding what the library is trying to do. So at least we have some communication.
Okay, great.
Since we own the building.
Right.
And we know that they can do, make changes to it. We just want to make sure it's done.
We have to oversee that because you own the building.
And it's, it's done with state ed's approval, and that we have the right architects and everything. So that, those conversations are hap, are happening, so that's.
Thank you, Warren. I appreciate that. Okay, that brings us to our notice of future meetings. We get a break for a while for vacation and everything. Our next meeting is actually our annual BOSIs budget vote and election. That's Tuesday during the day, 9:00 AM. That's in the Ed Center boardroom. And our next meeting here is Wednesday, May 3rd, 7:30 PM, right? That will be our budget hearing and our Chappaqua library presentation. They will present their budget. Again, we're back in the auditorium on May 3rd at 7:30. So may I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:00, if I could put my glasses on? 9:49.
I move that we adjourn at 9:50.
Okay. Now it changed. Call me in line for a few seconds. Okay. May I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.